I'd like to call this Tyler ISD Board of Trustees meeting to order. We have the presence of a quorum and the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. I think we're going to start with a short executive session and we'll wait on our esteemed leader at the same time.
Okay, we are reconvening from executive session. Thank you, Mr. Martinez, for handling things in my tardiness. And we do have some action to follow from executive session, which is a personnel item. Dr. Crawford?
Absolutely. It's our pleasure to recommend for the board consideration to be new principal at Clarkston Elementary, Ms. Sarah Kuratin. Ms. Kuratin actually currently serves as an assistant principal at Jack Elementary School. Prides me in knowing the type of lady that she is or type of professional that she is after having a student serve under her alongside Mr. Shelby. So our recommendation is Sarah Kuratin, former master teacher at Clarkston Elementary School, former teacher at Clarkston Elementary School, to be the new principal at Clarkston.
All right. Good deal. Well, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on that item.
I'll move that we approve the administration's recommendation for Sarah Kuratin at Clarkston.
Thank you, Mr. Burckfield. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Newsom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it and motion carries. Mrs. Kuratin, congratulations. Come say a word.
Well, hi there. I want to thank you guys so much, Dr. Crawford, President Washman, Board, for the opportunity to be the principal at Clarkston Elementary. I started in Tyler ISD at Clarkston as a teacher and I felt like I was being called to be there seven years ago when we came to Tyler. And now I'm being called back home, which is so cool. There's not another word for it other than so cool. I thought about the words, but you know, nothing else came out. There are so many people in this room that I owe a huge thank you to because they have grown me into the leader and educator that I am today. And I'm just really excited to get back to Clarkston and be a part of that success story that they're writing at Clarkston. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Kuratin. It is Clarkston Cougar Pool. Now, I started in Tyler ISD at Clarkston as well, kindergarten. Miss Lee's class way back in the day.
The facility was a little different at that time.
We were eight to noon. We were eight to noon. Yes, it was different back then. So, I had a classmate, Paul Atkins, back then. So, anyway, congratulations once again. So, it is time for public participation. Do we have any public participants? We do not? Okay. We have Tyler ISD Foundation Annual Report next.
Suzette Farr, the executive director of the Tyler ISD Foundation, will now address the school board on annual report. We've got a great relationship with our foundation. Years ago, y'all remember, the guy that this room is named after, Dr. Jack L. Davidson, actually started with a group of community members to begin the Tyler ISD Foundation. It turned into a strong organization. Ms. Farr?
There we go. Okay. Easy enough. Well, thank you so much for that introduction. So, thank you, guys, for having us. As you said, the Tyler ISD Foundation, it's always so great to be the district's biggest cheerleaders and advocates and just helping fill the gaps where needed. So, we'll dive right into a great annual report. As many of you know, the Tyler ISD Foundation, our mission is really to get in and to inspire learning, enrich teaching, and enhance opportunities for district expense through the support of exemplary programs. Simple put, that is, the foundation's work is to, we seek funds from community partnerships through grant writing and events and programs, and then we give those funds to the district in meaningful impactful ways through our programs. And so, here you'll see, that could be through individual donors, corporate sponsors, employee giving, grant writing, endowment funds, our BRIC campaign, and this year even hosting events. And then we're able to give those back into the district in ways that really meet our mission of inspiring, enriching, and enhancing. To date, this year, our total annual campaign revenue has increased by 14.7% from last year. So, we're super excited about that and continuing to see the community pour into our organization and our mission. This increase has really been able to be contributed to, and the biggest part, we've had 9.9% in individual donor giving increase, but the larger part is 52.5% in our corporate sponsor giving. And a lot of that was accredited to our first annual golf and tennis classic, where we had lots of corporate sponsors this year. We also saw a huge increase in our Tyler ISD employee giving, our Friends of the Foundation campaign, increased by 12.9% to over $50,000. As to date, and we are looking to see that could possibly hit close to $60,000, which would be the largest amount given from that program. Another big increase that we're super proud of is the increase in the amount of employees participating in that program, increasing to 984 employees giving in our campaign this year. So, very excited about that. Overall, here, as you see, we had some really great donor-specific grant awards that came in from the Ray Marr Foundation, helping us purchase a milling machine for our Career and Technology Center. We worked with the Genaco Group for a new grant that went to Griffin Elementary, and we were able to do some amazing things there with their teachers. And then we also had a great, large anonymous donor come in and help us partner with the Bochea Center for their new playground. So, we were super excited about having those opportunity and continuing to do those things. So far, to date, we have gifted a total of $216,690 to Tyler ISD this year. And so, we are definitely set on the pathway to have our largest contribution to the district. So, very excited about that. This year, we had our largest and most successful grants for great ideas and awarded 37 grants for over $95,000, impacting more than 8,000 students this year. Scholarships also, we hit a new record. We awarded 19 student scholarships for $52,000, a large increase over our $39,000 last year. So, very excited about that. This was also our first year of awarding the Maria Emma Nun Scholarship. So, that was such a beautiful moment for her family. We also, again, those special grants that I mentioned ahead of time, we're able to give those back into the schools this year. And of course, hosting and supporting programs throughout the district is always a big part of our mission. And then here's just a quick financial look over the past five years. As you can see, Dr. Crawford mentioned earlier, the foundation just continues to grow stronger, continue to be able to give back more, and of course, we're always looking for ways that we are able to be frugal in our operational expenses and really make sure that the largest part of what we bring in goes right back into the district. Are there any questions?
I've got a question. Can you expand on the scholarships? Who are we giving scholarships for? Are these for dual credit classes or are these for college?
So, these are for college courses or, in some cases, a large part of our scholarships go to our career technology students who may be going into trade schools or pursuing their certifications outside of here, or internships over the summer before. So, it's all to graduating seniors.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, since 2017, I believe that we've had a construction trades scholarship that's been provided by the subcontractors and the architects and the builders that goes to students that are participating in the construction pathway at the CT Center as well. That's been a neat program that's been kind of managed by the foundation, that has been managed by the foundation. Mr. Loper, Ms. Jones, and Mr. Beddingfield have been integral in seeking those donations as well. So, it's a pretty wide swath of things. I mean, they've got these ones that are endowed, that are named after individuals as well.
Yes.
Or sometimes, I think we have, has to be a swimmer?
Yes. So, we have some of our scholarships, one that goes directly to swimmer. And so, this year, we were able to do two swimming scholarships, and it actually went to, and they're legacy students, and that was created for a former student who passed away from Tyler ISD, who was a swimmer. And then we have our Career and Technology scholarships, as he mentioned, our Tab and Bonnie Bell scholarships, our Maria Emma Nun scholarships. We have a great one with the Karns family, who is a great vendor and community partner here, who also gives out scholarships.
I have a question. In regards to the students, how do they find out about all the opportunities for scholarships?
So, we actually partner with our Career and College coordinators at the campuses, as well as our counselors and our PTAs at all three high schools, Early College, Legacy, and Tyler High, to coordinate all of the information. And so, we send it all out through them, and we also post it on our website, on our social media, and things like that. And this year, we had a really great response and come in. We had more than 50 students apply for the scholarships we had available.
Okay. General, the scholarships amount, how much of those range? Just a general range?
Yeah. So, our scholarships range from $1,000 to $5,000.
Okay. That's great.
Just wanted to make a comment. You do an awesome job. I worked with you on that committee, and Night of the Shining Stars was outstanding.
Thank you.
And so, I appreciate everything that you do to help make Tyler ISD better.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins.
Yeah. Tyler has always been such a benevolent place and a giving place, and it's cool that even where we are economically, that you're able to continue to tap into and to grow the foundation. And I'm so appreciative of the community and the work that you do to get them to understand that, hey, this helps kids. I mean, this is going directly to the source, and we're just eternally grateful for the work you do.
Well, thank you so much.
So, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Jacks, one last thing. Can you go to that, the balance, the five-year financial look? You know, kudos to, of course, Betsy Jones, your predecessor, certainly, we'd say the same thing there.
Absolutely.
I want to tell you, y'all, we were in dire straits around '15, '16.
Yes, we were.
And, you know, I think, were you on the board?
I was on the board at that time.
You were on the board at that time of the foundation. And so, it was kind of wavering. It was a sinking ship. And so, kudos to the board, those folks that stuck with the board at that time, because I saw some people fall off, to make this where it is today. So, Ms. Farr, you've got a heck of a challenge ahead of you, but it sounds like y'all are set up well for success.
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have the Return of the Shack School Health Advisory Council Annual Report.
Providing the Shack report, annual report, is going to be Director of Health Services, Rachel Barber. That's been one of her responsibilities, is to be the conduit in between the Shack Committee and the school system, along with the CNI Department. So, Dr. Groppel will certainly have some interaction going forward with Shack. So, Ms. Barber, looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you.
Hi.
President Washman, Board, and Dr. Crawford. So, the Shack has been in a growing year again, and we tried to rebuild it this year after COVID had kind of taken a hit with our membership. And over COVID, we had to do everything virtually. And so, this year, when we started coming back, we had elected two new co-chairs to restart everything. So, the mission statement of Shack, as you know, is to develop an awareness and commitment to a safe and healthy lifestyle through the Tyler ISD community. And I'll skip that part. Our new co-chairs this year were Christina Superbiel and Laura Rhodes. They are parents in our community and at Tyler ISD. They were new to Shack this year and learning the ways of Shack, and so, they were still kind of getting used to it. And then we had a secretary that was a parent of one of our elementary students. We held several meetings this year, as you can see. A lot of them were in conjunction with our CNI Department because we were under the adoption for our health curriculum, and those are listed in this list as well. So, our Shack Committee was very integral in that process. So, we had normal meetings that are listed there, and then also our instructional committee meetings where they got to review all of the instructional materials for the human sexuality curriculum that we just adopted. So, we've set forth some goals for next year. Number one being to increase parent participation. In our meetings this year, we had anywhere from 10 to 15 parents that would, or I would say, members that would be there. Some of them would be parents. Mostly, they would be district personnel, also being parents like myself, but we don't really count as parents at that point. So, we really want to connect with PTAs and get them to increase that participation. And then we want to increase our student participation. Before COVID, we had connected with our counselors, and we would have at least two to four students from each of the high schools at the CTC that were in those programs be able to attend those meetings. And so, we want to move our meetings from the St. Louis building back to the CTC next year so that they can attend those meetings. And then, some of the projects that they discussed in the last few meetings this year were that they would want to increase some health and wellness messaging for our students. So, we've really upped our health and wellness for our staff, and we're rolling out that program for our staff. And so, they felt that doing that for our students as well would be beneficial and that they would really like that for their students. And so, we're looking into how can we do that for them and in what ways. And then they also want to work with our Food Services Department to try to bring in the Farm-to-Table program back for them, so we can see how that we can do that. And that's my presentation. Do y'all have any questions?
Question in regards to the student participation?
Yes, sir.
How they select it? Again, the counselors get the students involved?
So, they usually go to those that have an interest in the health field. So, they'll go to the health sciences classes and ask the instructors for their input, and then they can talk to the students and see who would like to participate.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
One comment I'd make in regard to your Farm-to-Table program. We do some of that, so it's not like bringing it back.
Yes. It's just been on hold for COVID.
It has, but commodities are typically purchased in a variety of ways. Sometimes it's your Cisco, sometimes it's your Benny Keith Foods, Soul's Foods as well. But remember that some of those big food service providers also look local as well. So, it's not like they get all of, what fruits you can get from East Texas or vegetables, we'll try to get it here because the cost of getting it from somewhere else is there. So, it's not like it's going to be that difficult to do a Farm-to-Table program. I think that everyone was thinking that we're just going to go completely farmer's market on everyone. It's physically impossible to do so.
Right.
So, these providers are encouraged to do local produce for our farmer market. I can't believe I'm talking about that right now. But that's, you know, I think those are some easily attainable goals. And I was setting that up to saying that Shack needs, you know, attainable goals when you set those and attainable projects to work on. Some Shacks statewide at the school district level, man, they get really far out there on some things that certainly are tough. One thing that we had a few years ago was talking about vaping, and certainly, that is an encouragement from the superintendent's office, is to figure out a way to work on that. But that's going to take a community-wide effort. It's not just going to be trying to talk to the kiddos about, you know, the dangers of it, because we've talked to kiddos about the dangers of X, Y, and Z over the last 60-plus years. It's going to be some things outside of us. The churches need to get involved in it, and by golly, we need to start talking about every time a storefront opens up, here we are with a vape shop, you know, popping in there. You know, can't buy a bottle of bourbon in Smith County, but boy, you can go to the local vape shop and get you some of that. So, can't believe I was talking about bourbon here. But I'm just saying that, you know, we're talking about good old capitalism versus vices. That is an epidemic that is about to hit our, that has already hit our youth, and it spans the economic spectrum and the ethnicity spectrum as well. It's not just an Anglo or Hispanic or an African-American thing. It's not just a poor or wealthy thing. It is a problem. And I'll say one more thing in regard to that. How long is it going to take before fentanyl gets into those vapes and we don't know about it? And so, I'm hoping Shack can, maybe, that would be an encouragement from the superintendent's chair, to maybe that's something that we can work on in conjunction with our Communications Department and then our local entities to stunt some of this vaping issue that we have.
Thank you. Continue to pump up the word there. Okay. We have Superintendent Staff Reports, Gifted and Talented update. It's first.
So, we have Gretchen Naby, our Director of Elementary Programming, is going to give you a Gifted and Talented update, sitting alongside her, Dr. Lance Groppel, Deputy Superintendent of Administration. Ms. Naby?
Good morning, Board President, Board, and Dr. Crawford. This is going to be your annual update for Gifted and Talented. Go. All right. And so, this first slide is basically our definition of Gifted and Talented as written by the State of Texas and the State of Texas Plan, which was updated in 2019. This is the center for everything that we do. This is where we plan everything around the wording and the verbiage of the Gifted and Talented definition. And so, we're going to do an overview of this Texas State Plan with the six domains that are outlined in this state plan. We continually, continuously evaluate each of these domains throughout the year. This year, for our identification, we expanded our multiple pathways with the goal of equity. In addition to referrals from staff and parents, which has been a traditional method of identification for Gifted and Talented, we also used our Renaissance as a prescreener to identify students performing at high academic levels. So, we're looking at those kids that perform at about the 95th percentile. These are the kids that may not be referred by a parent or a staff member, but they are high performers. And so, my department will, we screen those kids, we get their data, and we actually refer them from the department standpoint. We contact the parent, and we get a parent permission to do the evaluation on those kiddos. So, for our, we do that kindergarten through fifth grade. Kindergartners take the Naglieri Nonverbal Abilities Test, which is a really quick 30-minute test. It's picture-based, and they're able to navigate that. First through fifth, take the COGAT, which is a cognitive abilities test. It's not an IQ test in that a student can perform at higher levels if they're tested subsequently on that particular test. We also tested, last two years, we've tested every first grader in the district, and that was also in hopes to identify students at an early age. What we gathered during that process was first graders in the fall, some of them are a little bit young to navigate the platform, so it became a little bit of a barrier for them to be successful on the COGAT. We're going to shift that to second grade this coming year so that we know that students will be able to facilitate the process and not be upheld by the process of the test itself. So, we'll test every second grader in the district at all of our elementary campuses and, again, to hopefully increase equity and also that early identification piece for our Gifted and Talented program. And again, we just continue to monitor that very, very closely. We also are, we're looking at our equity in instruction and making sure that students have those opportunities of access in the classroom, in the Gen Ed classroom, also in their delivery of instruction in the Gifted and Talented classroom during that pull-out time. We also focus on that high levels of student engagement and then also the artifacts of learning and the products that they produce. And we'll talk a little bit about the products and the projects that they will do this year. The student assessment process, so, again, we're shifting that to second grade this coming year, just we feel like that's going to be a better grade level for all students to test. It gives us a couple of things. It helps us identify students early. It also helps us to establish district norms as well as campus norms for that identification piece. Instead of looking at the data on a national level, we want to compare our students based on that definition. We want to compare our students to the students that they are in the environment with. So, second graders and kinder, we'll test them at the end of October to mid-November. Kindergartners, according to the state plan, need to begin their services around March 1st, and so, we will do that this year with them. So, our service design, we're increasing our flexibility of time with our students. We're genuinely going to differentiate their instruction. It really has typically been all for the same, everybody gets the same exact thing. And we're really looking at how can we further differentiate for students who perform at high levels? And so, in that pull-out program, they'll get some services for that. They'll have the project program, and we're also creating a hub, my department's creating a hub in Canvas for teachers to help that differentiation piece. Students will be able to access the hub, access TEAC-based grade level activities that will help in that differentiation piece. And especially for our fast finishers, which we have a lot of those typically in our program, it gives the teacher another tool, the Gen Ed teacher another tool to say, okay, you need to go into the hub and choose your activities that are on your grade level. We created this year a TEAC-based year at a glance for all of our teachers. With the mobility rate in Tyler, we have kids that go from campus to campus throughout the year, and what we don't want is for a kid to come into our program at a different campus and go, oh, I've already done that. So, what we make sure is our timeline and our year at a glance is consistent throughout our classes, that instruction is consistent throughout the school year in all of our classes. The teachers plan together. We create a Canvas course, and the teachers pull all those activities out of the Canvas course into their lesson plans every week. The students will engage in two major projects this year. Last year, we did one every nine weeks, and it was a lot. We use the TPSPs, which are the Texas Performance Standard Projects created by TEA. We tweak those and we increase the rigors of those in the presentation piece as far as what the students have to produce. So, those projects are available, K to 12, and they comprise a set of performance standards, the curricula assessments, and it helps with that differentiation piece for our students. So, they'll be able to access and work on those twice a year. We monitor the grade level TEAC alignment and the artifacts of learning as students engage in their research project, their design, and the creation of their presentation. In addition to conferences that our Gifted and Talented teachers attend, they also engage in weekly PLCs, and this is something we are very committed to this past year. It is a great way for us to have those continuous conversations and alignment for our Gifted and Talented instruction. They'll continue to do that, and then we're going to also encourage them to attend the PLCs in the campuses in which they serve. We have eight Gifted and Talented teachers that service the 16 campuses. Caldwell serves a little bit differently. They do that within their general education, their design of their campus and their program. Then, in addition to that, our general education teachers get their Gifted and Talented update every year, and I facilitate that process and provide them those resources that they would need for that. In terms of the TPSP requirements for GT teachers, they work with the campus administration to showcase the student projects during the campus events for family and community engagement. This includes academic and cultural events at the camp- This includes academic and cultural events that the campuses may have. And most of our campuses are Title I's. They have at least two events every single month. This is a great opportunity for students to showcase the work that they're doing, the products they produce during gifted and talented services. This is the data for, our current data for our seated gifted and talented students by campus. This is percent of, and we say first through eighth grade because two of our campuses go through eighth grade now, currently Birdwell and Caldwell. And this gives you a representation of those elementary campuses and the percentage of students served on those campuses that are in gifted and talented and identified as gifted and talented. And again, a representation for our secondary campuses as identified as gifted and talented. This next representation is the percentage by race of current students and how they are represented in the elementary level. It's important to note that we've seen increases in our economically disadvantaged group as well as our ELLs learner population over the last two years, especially with the redesign of our identification process. Instead of just relying strictly on referrals, doing these other pathways has really helped us increase those numbers in our other ethnicities and also, again, the economically disadvantaged in our ELL population. This would be our breakdown of our secondary. And this identifies, represents the gifted and talented by ethnicity at the second level. So, this is overall. The next representation is by campus. And it gives you the percentage of each of the groups at each of our campuses currently. Again, our identification process is working towards providing equity and access at all of our campuses. I will point out that when I came into this position in 2021, Griffin had a total of 14 students in their program. And we've more than doubled that number. So, we're not only increasing in some of our populations, but we're also increasing and leveling out some of the over-identification at some campuses and the under-identification. And this is a representation of your secondary campuses by race per campus. And that concludes your update. Do you have any questions?
I'm sorry, I missed it. Can you talk again about how, what the impact was of that, of the new screening process that you guys implemented? And when that was? Was that two years ago or was it this year?
We, really, this past year was the first year we did all of those identification processes. The first year, we did the referral process and the Star Renaissance screener and then also testing the first graders. Another important thing I should note that this past year, in addition, just taking the top 5% across the top, we looked at each campus individually in terms of their data, getting those norms from the first grade tests that we provided the last two years. And it helps us look at what is the environmental impact or what are the, what are the kids, based on their peer group? Where do they fall within that? And that helped us identify some additional students in that ELL population as well as our eco-disadvantaged population.
A question regarding the testing, you said you test them one time. Are they, do they have an opportunity to retest during that same year or within a timeframe?
That's a great question. The state of Texas only allows that to happen one time within their elementary time to retest. And I believe one time during their secondary after they're in sixth grade and up. So, we typically do not retest them. If a student doesn't qualify for gifted and talented services, we do have an appeal process. And the parent just completes the appeal process with us and they provide whatever evidence they'd like us to include in addition to the evidence that we already have based on that student.
So, the state doesn't allow you to retest them? Now, based on the Renaissance, you said 95% of the, 95 are above is considered. Now, if they're scoring that high on the Renaissance and they fail on the test, they're still not considered for gifted and talented?
Say that last part one more time.
If they take the Renaissance, you said you base, you look at the 5% that's gifted and talented based on the scores on the Renaissance. If they are scoring that high on the Renaissance test, but then they fail on the test that you give from the state, they're still not considered for the program, right?
They have to perform at a certain level based on their campus data on the COGAT or the Naglieri, whichever test that they're taking for qualification. But one great thing about what you bring up is that that is a kid that we're going to flag because they're a high performer somewhere. And like I said, the COGAT is a test that they could take again and actually perform better on in a subsequent year. So, we did this this past year. We had some kids that didn't perform well in the COGAT that we referred again because we felt like they could probably perform well.
So, they're referred for the next year, but not that same year?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Now, as far as the teachers, you say you have eight gifted and talented teachers for 16 campuses. How do you disperse the teachers within the campuses?
So, we do that based on the caseload for each campus. Most of our teachers service two campuses. There's a couple of teachers that service three because their caseload is a little bit lighter. Yes.
One other question in that, I think the last one. Do you use any of this information to associate with the honor societies on the campus? Any of your data used to link individuals for honor societies that exist on campuses?
I think a couple of our elementaries, because I'm more on the elementary side. So, I think a couple of our elementaries do an honor society. That would be just a campus decision, how they make that determination for their honor society and how the kids qualify for that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions regarding our gifted and talented report?
GT's always been a kind of an enigma, figuring it out. Kids that I thought were pretty gifted, that had missed a star question in years and didn't qualify for GT services. So, you know, intelligence comes in many different forms, I think.
Absolutely.
You know, how GT started, you know, we were used to, we used to run the Target plan, which the same amount of teachers were used at Target to serve the kids that actually got bused there. And our principals kind of asked, begged us to reevaluate that while it was a useful plan for years, Target was, to get them back on their home campuses. I think they felt pretty comfortable with them staying on campus and providing their services there as opposed to, you know, spending 20 minutes on a bus to get one way and 20 minutes back. One thing it has helped out with is equity across the school system in regard to all kids. Because we were, the Target day, from my understanding, was a review day, you know, a reteaching day, which is fine in some cases. But we were kind of shutting down the fifth day of instruction for the rest of our students that didn't qualify for Target as opposed to trying to figure out a way to integrate it into your day-to-day curriculum and instruction activity. So, I think it's been beneficial for us to get these GT services back on to campuses as opposed to the way that we used to do it. And certainly, we'll continue to try. My biggest thing is we've got talented kids out there that deserve access to it. We've got to figure out a way to continue to get some of those students that have been in historically underrepresented populations there without watering down the program. So, keep looking and keep trying to find creative ways to get super talented kids inside of our GT program, my encouragement.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, our next superintendent staff report is our Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan.
Yeah, Return to Learn, man, we're tired of talking about that for the last two years, right? But here we are in year three. We're going to have a year four and I think a year five. Dr. Groppel's going to go over some of that, why we're having to actually present this to the board. So, Dr. Groppel, your time.
Yeah, President Washman, Dr. Crawford, board. Bring to you today our proposal for Return to Learn Plan for 2223 school year as a part of ESER funding. We're required to review this on a six-month basis. So, we'll review this plan all the way through 2024 to continue to receive ESER funding to provide the supports on our campuses. In the Return to Learn Plan, the proposal has received feedback from different departments around the district that are impacted without, outlined in the program in front of you. We, there are not significant changes to the work that we've done this year in creating that safe and secure learning environment for our students as it pertains to optional masking and student choice on that sort of thing as well as our cleaning and safety protocols around the campuses. So, you won't see a significant change to our current practices that we have had. Additionally, we sent out an email to our community to receive feedback on this plan on Friday. We'll keep that feedback line open as we prepare for the beginning of school in August. So, I'll subject any questions you may have about the Return to Learn Plan and our process for receiving feedback.
Go ahead. I just had one question in regards to, I was looking at under the screening and isolation. It said all students and staff will be monitored for infectious illness daily. You know, I was, we are not doing that, are we? And that's just Return to Learn. And I assume it's going to be updated anyway because the guidelines have definitely changed in regards to all of that.
I think you've got to define monitor. What does the word monitor mean? You know, is it just visual monitoring, you know?
Right. That's the question.
Probably what it means.
Yeah, well, and obviously, we're relying on our community to be transparent and sharing if they are showing symptoms. We've had a lot of trust in community, not only here in Tyler, but around the country that if I'm feeling ill, that I'm not going to potentially expose others to illness. So, monitor from the lane of if I report to the campus that I'm showing symptoms, that we would work through that lane to make sure we're providing a safe environment that way.
Yeah, very similar to what even pre-COVID, if you had a fever, don't come to school and stay out X amount of days till you don't exhibit any symptoms. I think those things will continue to be, continuously be communicated at the campus level through communications and then through the nursing, through our nurses there as well to make sure that if you've got a fever, if you've got these symptoms, monitor those symptoms because the CDC guidelines have changed so many times since we started this. But more importantly, if you're feeling ill or feeling sick, do your thing and make sure, whether it be flu, whether it be monkeypox, whether it be COVID, stay at home as well. So, absolutely. Community-wide effort now instead of just putting it on the schools' back, which is kind of, every solution we have in this country now is being put on the schools' back. So, we'll try to do what we can on this. But we are being compliant with federal guidelines on accessibility of the ESER funding as well. One thing I will point out inside of the Return to Learn Plan is we've worked with adjusting some of the masking things that, you know, kids are wearing those for a variety of reasons. Some of them are authentically wearing those. Some of them wear them on their forehead. Some of them wear them down on their chin. We're going to ask people to wear them appropriately or we will ask them to not wear them at all. So, I just wanted to make sure that we were transparent about that from the dice, that we realize that there's, there's some research out there that said that kids have gotten really used to it, not for the, for the public health standpoint, but for other reasons as well. So, we know we're not going to, you know, we're not going to make a big deal about that. But we are, if you are going to choose to wear one of those, you still need to wear an appropriate mask. You need to wear them appropriately as well. Never thought I'd be talking about that as part of our dress code, but we are.
Okay. It says free Wi-Fi access in the parking lot. Is there signage or parents know exactly where to go in the parking lot for free Wi-Fi?
It should be available anywhere within a district facility, parking lot. It's similar practice to what we've been doing currently since the beginning of the pandemic.
So, it says specific location. So, is it the whole parking lot?
I think in close proximity to the building, I would refer to Mr. Jackson on that.
On our website, it shows the location of the parking lot.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, when did we implement that? That was, that was early?
Right, very beginning.
Yeah, so like?
Yeah, that was.
Over that summer.
Was it over the summer shutdown? Yeah, right when y'all first got on the board, I think that was the program that we started. Where's that, where's that spot at Rose Stadium, by the way? In front of the ticket booths, okay. It's not by the locker room and certainly isn't from the stage when there's lightning on it. I know. I'm just messing with you.
Okay. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you. Okay, now we have a budget presentation for the 2022 and 2023 school year.
Yeah, Tasha Bjork, our CFO, Deputy Superintendent Finance and Operations, is now going to present, have a little budget presentation, a little budget workshop for the board. This, the special call meeting that we had on the second, I guess a week ago, we provided y'all with the compensation structure to approve. So, that's part of the budget process. And then, here we are today with the rest of it. Ms. Bjork?
Right. Last week, I knew at that point we could fund it. So, that's why we brought it to you last week. So, this week, I'll go over the funding and how we are going to pay for that. But it has been a very interesting budget, to say the least, with property values and such. So, I'll discuss that a little bit. On this first slide, these are our revenue sources. State is around 35% and local continues to inch up, 62%. And then, our federal money, SHARs and such, they're about 2% or 3%. For our state revenue, if you have your agenda, you can turn to page 24 and 25 for the revenue sources to look at that simultaneously. But our state revenue is going to go down. And that is due to a decrease in our student attendance based on this past year. That's around $690,000 decrease. I reduced the attendance a little bit. We were held harmless in '21, '22. We're actually going to receive more than I betched it by about $2 million in '21, '22. But our attendance was still a little lower than what I betched it last year. And I don't know that they'll hold, continue to hold us harmless. So, I dropped that a little bit. And then, with the property value increase, our local share went up, which means we get less state funding by about $2.3 million. So, our state funding will go down $3 million. But conversely, our local property taxes will go up. And if you turn to page 25, this is probably the best part of the presentation. Our values went up 13.1% this year. Now, keep in mind for residential property owners, if they have a proper homestead exemption in place, their values can go up no more than 10% per year. So, they have that limit. But then, we have a limit that we are, we can go no more than 2.5%. So, what the state does is they back our tax rate down to where we see no more than 2.5% of the value increase. Therefore, our tax rate for general fund is going to drop almost 8.5 or 9 cents. That's projected. We, these values we just received and they go through all their appeals and that type of thing. And they'll usually decrease a little bit. So, the tax rate may go up a little, but it's projected right now to be .8697. And it was 95.41 last year.
Tax rate won't go up. You're saying it may go up from your projection?
Right, from the projection.
It's going to go down. Just want to make sure we're saying.
That won't be, it won't be much more than 8. I said that wrong. From what I projected, the projection may go up.
When we post it.
Okay. And we won't know that till the first week in August, what our tax rate is. Because the county sends us our final values the last week in July. And then, I have to send them in and they tell me what my tax rate is. and then I have to send them in and they tell me what my tax rate is.
Now, remember, Board, previous legislative session, they changed that. It used to be previous year values that were you, not current year values. That's why you're waiting so long to do that for September one budget. It's tough, so.
Right, and we
Tasha is going to retire someday.
And, and so we, our local, our local share of state funding increases for the timber, for the higher increase in values, but we only get to recognize for tax rate purposes two and a half percent. So it's kind of backwards. So our increase in property taxes is around three and a half million. Well, so that leaves us about $500,000. If you take the difference between the property taxes and the state funding, we have about half a million dollars, which is not much. So what the other areas, what, again, ESER has helped us in this arena. The, a part of the state grant is that you can have a certain percentage of the grant go to your general fund to reimburse for administrative expenses, any, like we do all the purchase orders, payroll, all that. So there's an indirect cost rate, and that amount of the grant, I think it's around three or four percent, comes back to the general fund each year, based on what we spend in the grant. And so because of that, we're having an increase in our federal income in the general fund, which is going to help cover our raises now. And we had SARS revenue that went up almost a million dollars. That just continues to climb, based on what I betched it last year. So we will have an increase of around 2.9 million in our revenue. And that's a 1.7% increase of the budget, so it's not a large increase, just 1.7%. Now on to the salaries. They are approximately eighty-two percent of our budget, and our budget's going to be around 169 million, I believe. And again, you see, we have the teacher and our in base pay increased to 50,000, and then administrators at two percent, and the base hourly rate 12%. That's what we went over last week. Increase in police officers, thirteen of them. And then increase in stop and expense for middle school coaches, and then TRS and TRS on behalf to employee raises. The salary reset from the prior year. Last year, when we did the salary estimates, they were just too high. It kind of builds up over the years, and what happens is, you know, we raised the teacher pay and all that. There, it was kind of hard to evaluate what the, like, we used a midpoint for vacancies. And so it's kind of hard to evaluate what the true impact of raises are. And so we, I did a reset for that, which helped with the increases too. And so the payroll and benefits are around $2 million of the 2.9 million dollar increase. The other increases are really minor. This is just a listing of instruction and instructional support, and it's around 300,000. It mainly relates to graduation, academic competitions, fine arts competitions, officials' fees and the athletes' meal expense, our tuition for regional day school for the deaf, and then campus allotment increase. We decreased, we took out the Camp Tyler Day Program to help pay for our police officers that we're going to add back. And so there's, it's actually a decrease of 300,000. The next page is our, just regular operating budgets. Now, the preventive maintenance fund, that's where we put three cents of the tax rate. And those cents went up by about 120,000 per penny. And so that will be 360,000 of the 770,000. And then our technology contracts continue to increase because we have more users now with everyone having devices. And so that expense keeps going up, plus just pricing of these contracts has, have gone up. And so we're going to have a balanced budget, 2.9 million dollars increase. And there's details in the packet of all the departments and such, and a one-page summary of all the increases and decreases, let me find it, on page twenty-six. If you wanted to see a snapshot of what all the increases and decreases and how much, it's there. And so one other thing that I need to talk about, just the debt service fund, we are going to be able to lower that rate three and a half cents. So right now it looks like we'll lower the tax rate almost 12 pennies, which is a lot. And we will still be able to fund our debt. And the new debt, we will probably be able to put it over twenty years versus our twenty-five to thirty that we normally do, even, and still reduce the tax rate on debt service three and a half cents.
Very cool, that's awesome.
Exactly, yeah, it's really good. So almost 12 pennies.
And this is kind of early on, what we're projecting, and we'll know for sure in August. And that's when we'll, we'll go ahead and set, set all that.
Right, at our August board workshop, I believe I'll know by then. So we'll have the, that's when y'all approve the tax rate to publish for the paper, for the actual adoption.
Right. Okay, I'll open it up to the board for any comments or questions.
Just a comment.
Oh, yeah.
Really appreciate the, the salary increase for teachers within our district. We, we, we were ahead a little bit in the area until Chapel Hill had the special meeting on last week, I think it was, and they increased theirs as well up to 50,000. So now we gotta promote our district a little bit more to keep our good teachers.
Well, they're on TRS.
Right, we have health insurance that beats that.
Our, our insurance is better than Chapel Hill's. Okay, that's an edge. Okay. Looking for all those points to keep our teachers, the good ones.
Well, if we're going to get into that, facilities, check. Insurance check. Professional development check. Doing a good job, Chapel Hill. Appreciate, love LaMond over there, he does a good job. We've got a lot of check boxes that we check off, we're not going to go through all of them.
Any other comments or questions?
I just, one thing, you know, the, the seventy meetings that the administration conducted, and ten times a meeting, we said no tax rate impact. It was not set in vain. The coolest part of this is certainly a, just a twenty-year extension of any existing debt. And that pretty much matches the, the timeframe for the high school bonds that we've got. So if, if things hold tight, we don't have some Tesla company come in here and we have this big spike in enrollment. You know, this, this latest and greatest bond that we passed was not done untruthfully. And, you know, thanks to the, the value spike announcement on April twenty-third, right before early voting conducted, and all the keyboard cowboys and Karens that got out there and started talking about how we were being dishonest and all that kind of stuff. Here is your, 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 your reckoning from the district standpoint that we're able to lower the, obviously statutorily required to do it on the M and O side, but on the INS side, we can do so in a way that's impactful to our community. Tasha, one question on, you said a half a million dollars. Is that, is that all of an increase that we're going to see from the appraisals? That's it, right?
Right, when you net out the state funding.
All the different formulas that, that, that we have somewhat of a knowledge about, but the local taxpayer, when they get this announcement on April twenty-third, the school district is not robbing the community blind and increasing their revenue because it's not allowable. They have put caps on that, they've put governors on that, and it's only going to go up. Our local revenue will only go up half a million dollars on the M and O side. Is that what, is that a pretty good talking point there?
Right, local revenue.
Wow.
And state.
Yeah, I mean, some of the stuff that was out there that was ridiculous in opposition to the bond, I can, can I talk about that now since it's already over? I can, right? Some of the, some of that stuff, noise that was out there, just folks just running out of their mouth, not talking about what they don't know anything about. Here is the, the reckoning, reckoning on that. Incredible that the state's been able to do that. You and I have talked about, there might be a property tax decrease over what they're paying this year, or this year versus next year at a certain level of, of property value, I believe. Well, we talked about it, if you owned a home of 330,000 dollars.
Yes, okay, yeah.
That there might, there might be a, a threshold right there because of the homestead exemption.
But that's when I thought that we were only going to be having to lower the tax rate a few pennies.
Right.
When I was thinking, okay, seven, eight percent, but when it came out 13%, it went way down. So there's, it's a higher level now that people should actually see a decrease.
So although, although you're The homestead exemption that was passed as well, right?
If you have a homestead exemption and your values did go up alarmingly, come next December thirty-first or at the end of this year, you might actually pay less even though your home is valued more.
It should not have gone up more than 10%.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll certainly talk more about that maybe. We'll, we'll have Dusty Trailer with RBC, our financial advisor, potentially could run some of those numbers so that we can talk about that. This is just having a conversation up here because of what we started back in, on April the twenty, that, that thing will be emblazoned in the rest of my, the rest of my life, about that, the timing of that and then having to go through some of that. So I'm glad we can stand here today and, and tell the public, tell the board that some of the projections we thought were going to happen are coming to fruition, so.
Yeah, and I know that we'll get to talk about it more, especially come August, but I'm so thankful we live in a place that supports public ed. I mean, we got the Tyler I D Foundation here today and all the support they get. And then they've blessed us, our community has blessed us over the last 20 years by supporting our bond calls. And, and now that that's over, we get to say thank you to them by lowering the tax rate. And I'm, I'm really proud of that and I'm proud to be a part of it. So I'm excited for August to get here and we can make it official.
No doubt. One last thing, I wrote a note down here. Of course, the eighty-eighth legislature is coming up. There's been a lot of things happen that's, they're going to be very distracted and working on very important work, obviously. One thing that's been talked about, kind of bounced around in regard to funding and the way that our society is changing. The seven, the eight of us, the nine of us up here at the board, by golly, we're going, our kids are going to go to school. You know, you have a little bit of a sniffle, as long as you don't have a fever, you're going to go to school and it's important to go to school every day. Our attendance, no doubt, has been impacted by society's viewpoint, not on the sickness, on the illness portion of it, but just the, the ethics of going to school and getting your stuff done. They're talking about now, and eighteen states do this, actually funding on enrollment and not on average daily attendance. That's a large ask because they're going to have to tweak the formulas and it might increase funding. It will definitely increase their algorithms of knowing whenever they say we're going to fully fund schools, but they know that we're not going to come to school this X amount of days. Or they fund, they, they put those percentages in their formulas. So that will be interesting to see if they actually go to a funding by enrollment as opposed to funding by ADA, because we're not, we're not happy with our attendance rate this year, but I'm going to tell you that our peers and school systems, especially the ones that are part of the Texas School Alliance, have some serious problems with their revenue that's coming up as well. So it's a societal issue. Again, the schools are being asked to maybe fix that as far as getting kids to come to, to, to school. So that's a little update that maybe in years future, we can fund Texas schools like eighteen or so states do, and that's by enrollment, not by ADA.
Okay, great, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll, are we, do we have anything else to discuss in executive session after this, or we're good?
I, I don't have anything, there's no anticipated action.
Okay, great, well, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for adjournment then.
I, I do need to talk with the board a little bit in the executive session about a few items.
Then I'll wait, I'll wait on adjournment.
But not action, action items.
Okay, great, well, good deal, well, we'll slip back into there.